Okay, good. Good evening. The planning board meeting for July 16th, 2024 will come to order. I'm going to read the notice first before we start because we have a member who's joining remotely. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandovermass.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your questions or comments prior to the meeting to jenright@northandovermass.gov. The question comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly.
Would you take it in?
Yes, please.
Sean Kevlin.
Here.
Peter Boynton.
Here.
Christopher Cosaurus.
Here.
John Simmons.
Here. Okay, so what do we got first? An A and R? Oh, boy, we haven't done many of them lately.
Nope. So I wanted to just show the location quickly. All right, so this is the five-corner intersection, Park Street, Osgood Street, Court Street, Pleasant Street, and the A and R lot is a lot line switch between 303 Pleasant, which is this lot, and 16 Court Street, which is this lot. So it's pretty-
So it's not creating a new lot, right? Just?
Nope. It's pretty straightforward. Let me take this. So this middle section here, you can see my cursor, right?
Yep.
The swatted area is creating a new lot 11, which is to be conveyed to the AOW and BPD Family Trust, which is Lot 59A. The important thing here is there's in-ground pool. The requirement is 10 feet off the lot line, so by moving this lot line to here, the 15 feet maintains the minimum setback of 10. All other dimensional side setbacks are maintained. And Lot 59A before the transfer was 30,512 square feet. It becomes Lot 59B with 31,858 square feet, 1,346 square feet increase. Lot 11B becomes a Lot 11C, and the reverse is true. It goes from 60,646 square feet to 59,300. Both maintain the required frontage and the required lot area.
Okay.
So if they're related, it's just a land slot. So it has the appropriate signature box, and it has the caution that doesn't mean it complies with zoning, just because it's an A and R plan.
Right. So all they've done is swapped the small, that small piece.
1,350 square feet.
Yeah, from one lot to the other. Yeah, okay.
So this lot, this lot is the lot, becomes bigger.
Peter, do you have any questions? Chris?
No questions.
Sean? No? It was good? Okay.
John, I'm going to ask you to sign the MyLa tonight because tonight is the 21st day.
Okay.
So I want to make sure this gets signed tonight.
So we should probably have a motion that direct us to sign the Form A.
Yep.
Okay, somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in fairer?
Aye.
Aye? Sean?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, Fred, so you can pick it up tomorrow with me? 189 Willow Street has continued to August 13th, so that's the one that has been continued fairly regularly, and that's the next day they're supposed to come in. 335 Salem Street. John, do you want to read the legal notice on that? 335 Salem.
Just read what's here?
Yep.
Okay. This is a new public hearing, 335 Salem Street, JCE Property Development LLC, application for watershed special permit under Article Four, Part Five, and Article 10, Section 195, 10.7 of the zoning bylaw to authorize construction of a new single-family house infrastructure site grading on an undeveloped lot within the non-discharge zone and subsurface drainage zone within the nondisturbance zone of the Watershed Protection District. The property is located in the R3 zoning district.
Is Jack Sullivan here?
No.
Doesn't look like it. Okay, so the engineer is not here, however, are there any residents for this application? Okay, so I can provide an overview.
Okay.
And I'm surprised Jack's not here. So this lot, several months ago, was established via an A and R plan. So this is the corner of Salem Street and Appleton at the bend where the yellow blinking light is. This yellow lot is vacant because that was created via that A and R. It is in the Watershed Protection District. They are proposing a new house. The new house is located outside of the 150-foot nondisturbance zone. However, the stormwater structure is located within the nondisturbance. So before you, for a special permit for both the nondischarge and nondisturbance, the wetland is in the back here. The 25-foot line is where my cursor is now, so it's a small stream back here, the 50, and this is the 100. And so you can see, I'm sorry, the 100, 25, 50, 100, so they're not before conservation because they're not within the 100-foot line, and this is the 150. And so you can see that 150 just clips right here, and this is the stormwater discharge.
When did the Form A get done?
It was several months ago. It was one of the ones that because the building inspector interprets the buffer in the calculation by contiguous buildable area, the A and R was signed, and then they subsequently went to the ZBA and got a variance for the CBA.
Having trouble hearing. Can you speak up?
The A and R was approved. The applicant subsequently had to go to the ZBA to get a variance for CBA because, as you can see, a lot, the buffer zone is right here, and the lot goes long, so this whole section is within the buffer, and the buffer zone is included in the calculation for the 75% upland requirement.
That's per the building inspector's interpretation.
Yep, and Town Council has agreed. They had attorney representation that kind of went back and forth with our Town Council, and ultimately, they went to the ZBA and they got the variance.
Okay.
I don't think it was a whole year ago, but it was certainly several months ago, maybe six. So.
John, question? Yes, we'll undertake questions, but what we normally do in this case is we let the applicant speak, the planning board speaks, and then anybody who wants to get up and speak can just go up to the mic, identify yourself, and we will listen carefully to what you have to say.
So I just want to read about the stormwater. So the proposal is to construct a subsurface chamber system to infiltrate the roof runoff.
I'm sorry, we still?
I can't.
I don't know if the microphone's on or off.
Okay, so the applicant proposes to construct a subsurface chamber system to infiltrate the roof runoff. The system overflows through the downspout openings. The site is discharging greater than 100 feet from the bordering vegetated wetlands, and per the consultant, should not cause erosion in the waters. The first stormwater review report has been sent to the applicant and the engineer. Their response to those comments is pending, so they have not responded.
Where is the applicant and engineer? Are they here tonight?
That's what I said, it's Jack Sullivan, and he's not here, so I'm surprised that he's not here.
The applicant's here, just don't have that similar.
Okay. Okay.
So the house is a two-and-a-half-story wood frame. Front setbacks, inside, side and rear setbacks, all comply. Frontage complies. Garage under, to the right of the house.
Well, I mean, frankly, I mean, this whole thing is based on the engineering. If the engineer's not here, there's not a whole lot we can talk about, unfortunately.
Yep, I don't know if you want to hear the questions so that we can at least-
I mean, I think that's probably what we should do.
Yeah, so we can get answers for the next meeting.
And, yeah, so why don't you, normally what we do is we have the engineer speak because there's a lot of technical issues about how they're going to comply with all of the regulations related to water and how it won't cause a problem to, like, because that's really why this is in front of us, because it's a watershed special permit. But if the engineer's not here, we can't tell. So I don't mind if you, if you would like to make questions or have questions, we can at least get them on the table now, but we just won't be able to answer them, so feel free to come up and speak if you would like.
Hi, so my name is Bobby Zaireth, and this is my husband Nathan Stiles. We are the property owners of 240 Marble Ridge Road, so we're at that house that's on the corner of Marble Ridge Road and Salem Street, so we're the one that has the pond. So we're the one that has the intermittent stream that flows on our property and feeds into the pond. Now, we don't know where the water comes from. We just know it comes from somewhere upstream, but ultimately, it flows through our property into that pond that goes to that town culvert. So for us, you know, we see when it rains a lot, we have a lot of water that flows, and sometimes it just overflows so much that it does come onto our property, our landscape part of our property. It doesn't all stay contained within that area. So, you know, our major concern is that having a new structure, having new building there might exacerbate any problems that may exist already with water flow. That's not only on our property, but there's adjacent properties that are also affected too, and we have spoken about this prior. And I know they're trying to do what they can to mitigate any of those flow issues that may occur and water accumulations that may occur, but honestly, we're not really convinced that it's going to prevent any further, like, further problems. And so if it does, we always, we're always thinking about, okay, well, then what's going to happen with down the road? Because everything, we bear the brunt of it when all that water comes, and so for us, we think about then what's going to happen, and then, I mean, if that filtration system fails, how's it going to get remedied, and who's ultimately going to be responsible for that? I don't know. I mean, these are our, one of our major concerns. I don't know if you wanted to add?
Thanks, Bobby. Yeah, and some of this came up a year ago when we went to the zoning board of appeals to actually protest the fact that this could be a buildable lot. We brought these issues up there. At the end of the day, they punted to you guys, saying, well, it's a watershed issue. We'll just issue the permit and go on. I still question whether this is a buildable lot based on the variance that was given more than a year ago, and whether development has really occurred, and if the rationale for granting the permit here, or the, I'm sorry, what's the term here?
It's a watershed special permit.
Right, the special permit. Right.
By the way, if this were not in a watershed and just in a regular neighborhood, it would be a Form A lot, and there would be no planning board hearing at all.
Right.
And you wouldn't have any recourse, really, other than if they did something that caused a problem for you, you could sue them, but, yeah, okay.
No, 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 thanks for that. And as my wife said, I mean, the issue is, you know, we don't know what's going to happen two, three years from now, right? They're not liable for, or maybe they are liable for what's going to happen to our property, or the property owners that are going to come in and buy this property. What are they responsible for? You know, if this is not installed correctly, if it's not maintained correctly, it will likely affect us. And so if the, you know, the permit is going to be granted based on the report from Sullivan, I have concerns about that report. It, my understanding, it was done in 2023 back at the zoning board of appeals meeting, and it's not been refreshed since then. I have no evidence that John Sullivan has been on the property since then. The property, the permit says on page five that no trees will be removed, but in fact, as trees were removed after the property was bought, before this permit was applied. And I don't know if the engineer has been back out there to understand if that's going to cause any other issues. So that's the first question. The other question is, the plot map, if you want to bring it up, shows the, our parcel as owned by the Morgans. We've been living there six years, so I question whether the plot map is actually accurate. And if you look there at the diagram, how closely that 100-foot line comes to the, you know, the filtration unit? If this is even off by five, 10 feet, right, you have an issue. And so I questioned the accuracy of the plot map as well as the actual, how recent the engineer was actually out there to view the property and what's changed.
Basically, we're not supportive.
Thank you. I mean, obviously, I think we'll make a list of these and make sure they get addressed when the engineer comes in and we go through our due diligence, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Gianna DeLea, and I live at 255 Marble Ridge. I just want to attest to what Bobby and Nate was saying. If you go, can you go back, Jean, to that prior map you had up there? Please, thank you. So if you see Joe Verka abuts Nate and Bobby, and then that next property below, so Marble Ridge Road goes down on a hill to the stop sign where it meets Salem. It's a hill. I'm not going to guess the degree of hill, but I'm going to, maybe 35, 40-degree angle. That's a total guess, I'm not an engineer. But I can say that Joe's property and the property next to Joe, 370D3, there is standing water on that property every year, and I'm not talking an inch, and it goes back to the house on Salem Street that abuts the property that you're talking about right now. So there's an overall drainage problem here, and as Bobby said, adding something else is just going to exasperate it. And this is something, I've lived there, 18 years we've lived there? It's always standing water there, and it's a lot of standing, and it goes up to the front yard of 37D, it's like an eye exam, all the way back to their backyard is just full of water. So I just want to convey that to you as you-
So which way does the water flow?
It goes down Marble Ridge to Salem because that's the flow. There's a brook behind us that goes down, and it fills in the pond that Bobby was talking about, but these poor people, they've had so many water problems, and it's just constant flow of water. And if you add to that, I don't know what would happen. It would be, it would be terrible to not manage what's happening here. So I just wanted to give you that insight because I don't think that anybody is conveying that yet either. There are other drainage issues there before you start adding to it, okay? And if you go back, so here's another example. You go back to the cemetery. Remember what happened last year? They had to replace the whole bridge in the cemetery, get completely washed out. The money they spent on that bridge going over from the, from the caretaker's house, the property back over to where you get to the rest of the cemetery, it was washed out from so much water, from so much drainage down, because it all goes down to Stevens Pond. So this isn't a normal flat area.
I think it goes to the hatch, not Stevens.
What's the hatch? I don't know what that is.
Closest point of the lake.
Oh, okay, all right. So anyway, but my point is, keep those things in mind, between the flooding that's happened in the backyard of Joe and his neighbor, and then what happened at the cemetery last year, and the amount of money the cemetery had to spend on that bridge was crazy. So I just wanted to give you that insight, okay?
So this is Salem. It cuts through this property. This is the property, so it doesn't encompass the entire lot and then runs down Appleton. So-
So Marble Ridge is outside?
Marble, this is Marble Ridge Road to Woodbury Lane.
No, but I mean, like, all of the sheet flow that we've been talking about so far drains away?
Drains towards the lake.
Towards, but-
Yes, sir, where in the watershed? It's watershed.
Yeah, that it is. Everybody's, that's what I mean. So the watershed line's got to be on Marble Ridge?
It splits these lots that front on Salem Street. This blue hash line right here, that's the edge of the watershed. This is Ann Road.
Which is, where's Salem Street now?
Salem is right here, Ann Road comes off of Salem.
Okay, that's all in there. Now, what about Marble Ridge?
This is Marble Ridge. The blue hash is the watershed, so Marble Ridge is in it up until-
Oh, 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 I see. The blue hash is in it and Ann Road, and that stuff is out.
Is out.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
And Marble Ridge, it's in it up until Woodbury Ave., which is up to Marble Ridge.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, okay. So what does DPW have, do you know if they've looked at this or have any opinion on this?
They've been sent the application, they didn't have an opinion. I mean, it goes through the stormwater review because they have to prove that the post-development flow does not exceed the pre-development flow of water on this lot. So that's one of the standards of mass stormwater regs. And that's what the stormwater review is looking to do, to make sure that all these standards are met. And it doesn't close out until Jack, so he's got one memo, he's got to respond to it and address the comments that the peer reviewer has made. There'll be a maintenance plan that you'll condition as part of your special permit, the O and M plan, which runs with the special permit for that storm, that subsurface unit.
Sean, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Chris?
No, without the engineer here, it's-
Yeah, okay.
I don't know what else.
Peter? Okay.
We're going to-
Yeah, sure.
We're going to wait for the engineer, right?
Yeah, we got to wait to, yeah.
Hi, John. Hi, committee. My name is James Urb. I own JC Property Development. I'm the gentleman that purchased this property to develop it. I just want to reiterate that I'm a 23-year resident of North Andover, had four children that were raised here. Four of them graduated high school here from 2007, 2000, I mean, 1997 to 2005. So I'm not an outsider coming into this, okay? I've been in this business for 42 years. We hire consultants and civil engineers to design this stuff to what your requirements are. As you guys well know, and maybe these neighbors don't understand all of that, okay? These systems, like that watershed system that we have to put in, I've done hundreds of them, okay? And it, it's designed for a purpose, and it works, and you don't have to worry about it feeling in a year or feeling in two years, because the property that's next to us, so this property was just subdivided, what, not even a year ago, okay? And it was subdivided to build a single-family house there, okay? Well, where were all these neighbors when it was subdivided?
Please, don't go there.
Okay, but I'm, I'm, I'm just making a point because I'm coming in after the fact to buy something.
It may very well be true, but that's-
But we have a design in place to make sure that all of their issues are addressed.
Just get your engineer here.
Okay. Well, he emailed, Jean, he texted me that he emailed you, that he thought he needed to get Jean the changes, and that she was going to continue us till the 30th.
No, because the hearing opens tonight. I can't continue a hearing that people are expecting to open.
I'm just relaying what he told me. He sent you an email, so I guess I have to ask if we can get it continued to the 30th.
Well, we will, we will continue to-
He sent me an email tonight at 7:20, not before. Okay, I just have one more. Okay. I have one that was delivered to the office today, so I'd like to read that in before it closes.
Yeah, okay, great, yeah.
Hi, my name's Melissa Marama. I'm actually the lot directly next door, and I am a newcomer to North Andover. I actually purchased a property back in November, so I couldn't have been here prior because I was not here when the land, the lot was split. I appreciate the neighbors' concerns. I have a very big concern. I'm directly next door, and I know you're not responsible for these two lots being approved to begin with as two separate lots. There's various issues besides this watershed that need to be addressed, but the watershed itself, there's been work done on that property. So when you look there, I have the barn, and when they split the lot to get 125 feet of frontage in the front, that, that took half of the barn in the drainage, so I'm getting probably this much water in my barn door on the left-hand side. So I don't understand how watersheds work. I'm not going to claim to know anything about that, where, Bobby, they're getting water back there, but the water problem on that lot is severe. I mean, you're all welcome to come take a look at how much water I'm getting on the left side, which abuts a property directly, and I mean, we're, we're close. I mean, how this was approved in the lot line, I mean, we're right on top of each other.
So you bought the old house?
Yes, I bought 327.
Okay.
And so when 327, when they split the lots and it wasn't approved, and then Mark Johnson came back, got it approved, you have 125 foot of frontage that needed, so unbeknownst to me, unbeknownst to this buyer, unfortunately, I was misled. Granted, I signed the plot line, not aware that a quarter of the driveway belongs to him without an easement granted back, and it's a safety issue. That- That, it's not for this meeting, that's a separate issue. But I, I really would like someone to look at this watershed issue because unfortunately, things were overlooked when these two lots were separated, clearly.
When you bought your lot, the lots had to have been separated.
Yeah, they were separated in July. I bought it in November of this year. And yes, I'm at fault, but not clearly looking.
No, 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 but you could, it was one lot previously, right?
It was one lot, it was separated in July. I purchased it in November.
Oh, okay, after, okay.
And unfortunately, the owners, you know, told me, you know, it was a double, the double wall, which is a good 40 feet. But, you know, unfortunately, I was misled where my lot line is. It's not even close to where the real, the real lot line is. And that's my fault, that's on me. And unfortunately, it's not his problem either. He bought it knowing and looking and doing his due diligence. But my concern is, I have a ton of water already and there have been trees removed over there in the water. Problem is, it's gotten worse, so I just would, on note.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Just, my, my question, just generally, is neither of you were part of the existing ownership group. You bought in, you bought in. Now, this is where we are, okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
All right, so can I read this letter in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so July 16, 2024, Plating Board, Town of North Andover, R E J C E Property Development, 335 Salem Street, North Andover, Mass. Abutter comment. Members of the Plating Board, I am an abutter to the above referenced project, received notice of the public hearing. I have two concerns that I wish to convey to the board. I'm concerned about stormwater flowing onto my property at the, and that the construction as proposed will cause an increase in that flow. I'm requesting the board require the applicant to design the stormwater management system so that the post-construction flow does not exceed the pre-construction flow. I also request the board require the applicant to add a green barrier along the boundary to my property. I request that the plantings be native species and are monitored for three growing seasons. I appreciate your time and are available for any questions you may have. I authorize my caretakers and attorney representative, representative to represent me at the public hearing. Sincerely, Joseph Averker, 260 Marble Ridge Road, North Andover, Mass., 0845. And that's his property.
Have you looked at this EPA decision?
I don't think in detail, no.
No, I, it would probably be worth seeing what it said.
I think I did at the time, but it was a long time ago.
Sort of gets at some of the things that we're dealing with anyway and whether there's any compliance with it.
Yep. I'll include it in the packet for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will continue this two weeks, Jean?
August 13th. National night out is the first Tuesday in the month, so your meeting is the second Tuesday of the month.
Can you make that? Can your engineer be there?
August 13?
August 13.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, and you're all welcome to come back. And in the interim, if you have any questions, you can contact Jean directly with that. You can come into the office, look at the files. What it, all our files are open and completely transparent, so there's nothing that we're going to keep away from you, so, yeah.
And if you're not following agendas, when we post the agenda, there's a link to everything that the board gets, so you get it ahead of them.
Good, good, thank you. You have to recuse yourself at this point. We're gonna have a problem then, right?
We still have a quorum, but you won't be able to vote on it tonight. Three people at quorum, you can hear it.
Eton said he might call in, but I guess he hasn't.
But it's a special part of it, right? We can hear the stuff and then Eton can-
Sign a thing in the Mr. Beating, and then you can vote the next week.
So let me read the notice here.
I gotta recuse.
Yeah, okay. This is regarding 56 Academy Road. James Warden, application for historic barn overlay district special permit under Article 20 and Article 10, Section 195-10.7 in the Earth and Emerald zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes use of the 1950 Cal barn for prototyping of solar boats and ceramic arts, ceramic art. The project is located within the R3 residential zoning district. And for the record, Peter Boynton is recusing himself, so. James?
Hi. Good beer.
We're here.
So we, did I hear back there that we, you guys can discuss it? We can talk about it? And then, then, then the-
We have to-
The old chair can put this one in later?
We have four, and so we'll, we can vote it the next time, right? Yeah, yeah.
August 13th.
As long as Eton gets cut out, he signs his form.
Yeah.
If we get a pause.
Yeah. So if you could just give us the overview of what you're doing for the record.
Okay, so we-
Introduce yourself.
James Warden, 84 Academy Road, and-
Peter Boynton, 320 Stevens.
So we've submitted with lots of assistance to get things right from Jean. And no, Jean doesn't miss any emails. It's us out here that miss emails, not Jean. But we got everything submitted. And the last letter we needed from Historic District Commission that Jean helped us figure out just came in this morning-
Last night.
Last night. So we now, we think everything's in place and the certified letters and all that, or registered letters, whatever, they went out. So we're, this is the final application for the special permit. And we looking forward to moving ahead. So in any-
Should we talk a little about what we're going to do under the special permit?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the, the activity in there will be, you know, prototyping solar boats and ceramic art. And we will be doing some work to clean up the barn, almost all on the interior, except the windows will be replaced with the exact same look of windows to the street. And it'll be geothermal or air source heat pump heated. There's no heating or air conditioning in there now. What else is there?
We're going to meet all the requirements under the new Historic Barn Overlay District bylaw in terms of limit of the work inside and limit of any, anything coming out of the four walls and parking and nothing stored outside. All of that will be followed. And the prototype solar boat has been assembled and is in testing on the Merrimack River. And the current interim location is not big enough for the forthcoming boat, so we're very hopeful that the permit is approved and we can continue the colonial heritage of Kittredge Farm, which was farming with the benefit of the sun with plants. And going forward, we will continue to farm the sun for solar power on Kittredge Farm.
There you go. It's very poetic, Peter, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Much better than anything I could say.
So this is an aerial of the site. These two red cars are drawn in here. The bylaw requires to obscure the parking as much as possible. So you can see from the street, it's unlikely you'd see the two identified parking spaces. No additional pavement added, it's on existing pavement. There's one point of clarification I do need. So you see here the hours of operation in the application. So the application asks for eight to 6:00 p.m., Monday to Saturday, with up to two cars. Other hours with no cars, from time to time, with no light, sound, and anything perceptible from the street or neighbors. And so the bylaw specifies that they have to suggest the hours that they want, but the Plating Board, the hours of operations shall be set by the Special Permit Granting Authority, but no event shall the historic bond be opened to the public nor any retail product services.
I think we just set it up and it's like no harm, no foul, really.
That's fine, so, so you're comfortable with other hours when there's no-
I mean, it's gonna be one of the, you're just gonna walk over there, right?
Yeah, remember, I mean, not to make a relation here, but Thomas Edison, like, worked for like 52 hours and he slept on the floor and, you know, he took a train home, so, yeah. No, just kidding. But, yeah, we might, exactly, might be some nighttime activity or some Sunday activity or something. I, I'm in support of it. We've gone through this, are discussed, had these discussions going on for a few hearings at least, so I feel comfortable with, you know, what you guys are doing, what's going on there. And I guess we'll just wait, wait to get the vote.
Sean?
Yeah, just, actually, just a couple, couple of questions. So I guess just noise, like, I mean, imagine that when you guys are doing dry testing, it's going to be less noisy than a gas outboard, I'd imagine?
Yeah, I mean, there's, as the bylaw says, there's no sound allowed to emanate. So, yeah, these, even on the water, the thing is so silent. And in, inside the barn, we will be, you know, we spin the motors just slowly. So, you know, the only sound there might be inside might be some tools, like a drill or something, but there's nothing, there's nothing loud.
You don't make any noise, right?
So the ceramic art won't make any noise that we know of. The, the wheels are very quiet, so.
Great.
Yeah, there's no, should be, I mean, there're not allowed to be any sound coming out of the building. So we're also gonna be, you know, it's gonna be double glass windows, there's gonna be four inches of spray, close to spray foam everywhere, so, yeah, no sound's getting in or out, so.
Great.
Sean, just to your question about, you know, dry testing the engines, one of the things you have to be careful about with these electric engines is paying close attention when they're on and spinning because it's not like a gas engine where you have a verbal cue. They, they don't make any noise, which is nice.
Yeah.
As long as you're not near the prop.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why if you ever notice, all electric vehicles make some kind of a strange reverse noise because there's no noise, like a gas tailpipe puffing at you. You get no sound, so they all make these sort of strange Star Wars noises when they back up. So same idea that with the electric, we may have to make some kind of a noise, but.
Great, thanks.
Good, excellent.
My only other question is, the bylaw amendments have been sent to the Attorney General's Office after town meeting. They have 90 days to turn them around and approve them, so we haven't got that final approval yet, but there's no harm in issuing a decision-
Yeah, I don't think that's probably-
And starting the 20-day appeal period.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. So we'll plan, why don't you write up the decision and we'll-
It's in your packet. It's in your packet with the, with the, in case Eton showed up.
So we'll, we'll just write it next time when we have four voting members, so, yeah.
I have the copies here, but I won't hand them out, I'll just use it next time.
We can't call the boat? Dial up the boat.
We wondered if we could call Eton, but probably not. I think he's on vacation.
No, he didn't join, so.
Okay.
So, okay, great.
Thank you.
Wait till the 13th.
So my question is, how many historical barn permits will we hear over the next few years? This is going to be the first of many?
Well, that would be pretty cool.
Yeah, that'd be great. Become a thing here, so, okay. Okay, we have one more, a land disturbance permit. We haven't done one of them lately. So I'll read the, the notice here. 1101 Turnpike Street, Metro West Realty LLC. Application for a land disturbance permit in congi, in connection with proposed construction of a parking lot expansion at the Merrimack Valley Operation and Maintenance Facility, National Grid. The project consists of repaving and restraping of an existing parking area, a parking lot expansion, stormwater and ancillary landscape improvements, retaining wall and utility improvements to support its use. The property is located in the industrial I, I-1 zoning district.
Okay. So the stormwater peer review has begun. The first memo has been turned over to the applicants and a response to that is pending. The application before you is under the provisions of Chapter 160, Stormwater Management and Erosion Control Bylaw. So it's not the typical zoning bylaw, you're, you're under a stormwater bylaw. And Chapter 250, which is the Stormwater Management and Erosion Control Regulations. So there's a bylaw and regulations that you are the Special Permit Granting Authority. The applicant is proposing to construct a 72-space parking lot expansion and repave, restripe the 6,000-square-foot exist, existing lot. The proposed parking lot expansion includes landscaping, utility, and stormwater improvements. The project will disturb approximately 56,000 square feet and increase the impervious surface by more than 22,000 square feet. A portion of the proposed site work is within the 100-foot buffer zone to an onsite resource area, as well as the 200-foot riverfront area of an onsite perennial stream. The proposed stormwater management system includes catch basins that discharge into a gravel wetland with a sediment fore bay. Per Chapter 165, which are the regulations, I'm sorry, which is the bylaw, land disturbance permit application is supposed to be administered within 60 days of receipt of the application. The application was received June 13. 60 days would be August 12, which is a day before your next meeting. So I've spoken with the applicants, explained this. They've submitted an extension through September 12, which is two days past your September 10 meeting. That allows you to hear it not only tonight, but August 13, August 27, and September 10. And hopefully, we'll be through the stormwater review by then. Department review comments have been received from Health and DPW Operations. No concerns were communicated. And I told you the stormwater review has begun. I will turn it over.
Good evening. My name is Karen Staffier. I'm a professional engineer and project manager with VHB located in Watertown, Massachusetts, on 260 Arsenal Way. Just changed our address. And with me is Shane McNeveach. Just introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Shane. Along with Karen, I work out of the Watertown office at VHB as a civil engineer.
Great. So Jean, you just gave us a really good overview, so, you know, it's not as cool as a solar boat, so I'll try to keep this as interesting as I can. As you can see, I believe you can, you guys can see this, the screen here, right? So the site's located on Turnpike Street. I know, I'm sure you're familiar with the National Grid Merrimack Valley Operations facility. This is kind of the overall site plan here that you can see. It's a roughly 30-acre site. As Jean mentioned, there are resource areas along the perennial stream, which sort of bisects the site, flowing west to east. So the stream comes in on the western boundary and comes through the, under some of the driveways and out through the largest wetland area that's along Turnpike Street, kind of on the bottom, right? And then heads south. The only proposed project that we're here to talk about today is the parking expansion that's located in the front of the building that you can see as you drive down Turnpike Street.
Really the lawn area today?
There's a big lawn area in front.
That's what's going to be the parking.
And that's where the parking, actually, the next image shows the, is an aerial of, of the lawn. So in this view, you can see Turnpike Street on the right, the site drive coming in on the bottom right-hand corner of the page. And then there's a driveway that comes into kind of the uses that are up into the back of the site. And then there's this really sort of small parking lot that you can see on, just on the east side of that existing building. That's a, a small employee parking lot. They have, you know, a couple EV chargers and a handicap accessible space and just a few other spaces. The goal of this project is essentially to expand that parking lot to provide additional parking for office employees and for folks who come here. They have a couple conference rooms that they use for health and safety training and ongoing, you know, group meetings and professional development. So the expansion of the parking lot will be into that front lawn area. You can see on this aerial, it's recent enough. There are a handful of test pits that we performed in the lawn. And you can see the little areas where the, the grass is dead because Shane dug some test pits to figure out where the groundwater and ledge was, what the soil conditions were like. So from an existing stormwater standpoint, in this portion of the site, there's not, there's kind of three main areas where the water goes to. Jean, if you wouldn't mind, go back to existing conditions real quick. Most of the lawn either flows overland to Turnpike Street or flows kind of towards that vegetated area to a catch basin that's located adjacent to the existing site drive, at which point it gets collected in that catch basin, piped underneath the site drive, and, and then moves on downstream through the wetland system. The existing parking lot that you see has a single catch basin in it- wetland system. The existing parking lot that you see has a single catch basin in it, which discharges through its own outfall to the wetland that's, buffer zone is closer to the building. It's a little bit off-screen in this view, but, so there's a separate discharge point for that. So, here's the existing condition, and if you, you wouldn't mind. Big file. So, this is, this is just a, a rendering showing what the proposed condition will look like. The limit of disturbance is, is sort of represented by the green, the green hatch. So, the darker gray color you see is the new parking lot, it's two bays of parking to allow efficient circulation and, you know, people won't have to back up into each other to, to act, to leave that sort of small confined lot at the front. We're adding EV charging, bringing the accessible parking up to code to accommodate for the additional number of parking spaces that we have, and then constructing a new stormwater management system that, that collects and treats not just the water, this impervious cover that we noted was being added by the project, but also adding the old parking lot area to the system. So, we're mitigating, retreating not just the water that lands on the new impervious, but the whole parking lot. It will get collected in those blue pipes that you see and routed to that long linear basin, which is a gravel wetland. We consider different stormwater BMPs. Unfortunately, the depth to ledge condition that we found was not favorable to doing an infiltration basin, so in order to meet the TSS removal requirements, meet the peak rate and attenuation requirements of your bylaw and of the, the state bylaw, or state stormwater management regulations, we, we selected a gravel wetland, which provides the phosphorus treatment as well as the total suspended solids. As you can see, there's some landscaping proposed on here, trees within the parking lot, and then some screening, especially on the Turnpike Streaks, street side. Not readily apparent from an, a flat aerial view, but this, because the whole site slopes down the page from the north side, it, it really won't be visible, because it's kind of tucked into the hill. So, we didn't add plantings there, because they wouldn't really add value. We, we highlighted those on the, and put those on the Turnpike Street to provide screening. And last but not least, of course, we have submitted the Erosion Sedimentation Control Plan with the application and an operation and, and maintenance plan to ensure the long-term maintenance of the system.
Can you go back to the prior image? That lawn area, isn't that quite a slope?
It has a fair amount of pitch to it, so we had to find that kind of balance point where we could still get the basin in, not put the basin in the riverfront area. We had to put a retaining wall in to create a level area for the parking lot, and then we do have a, a bit of a slope to tie back into these existing.
How high is the retaining, where is the retaining wall in this diagram?
It's between the basin and the parking lot.
And how high is the highest point? Above grade?
I believe it's about seven or eight feet.
It does vary, we are, we are expecting.
At its highest.
At its highest. We're expecting that we'll need a, a permit from the Building Department for that wall when the time comes for construction.
Do we have a slide that shows the topos? Because to your point, Peter, it's like, there's a lot of variation.
Existing conditions at the back.
Yeah, sorry, are you looking for the existing topo or the proposed?
Yeah, I mean, I just, like, what's the existing and what's the proposed? I can't tell. I mean, it's in, okay.
Existing conditions is the second to last sheet.
Yeah, so, on this specific.
That's proposed.
Yep, so the, what's in bold and black is the proposed, and then the gray dash lines are existing.
So, the, does that mean the retaining wall will be above, like where the detention pond is?
So, the parking lot is higher up than the gravel.
The parking lot is higher?
Yes.
Correct.
And what's the grade of the parking lot?
So, it varies from 223 to 227. It pitches down from the east down to the west, and then those two catch basins are at local low points, so the existing parking area that's being restripped and regraded will also grade down to those catch basins as well.
So, the, what's the, on this side, how did the, what's the change in slope there?
On this side?
Yeah.
So, where my cursor is, 224, 226 here, 225 to 234.
And you don't need a retention wall on that side?
There's enough space on that side that we can grade it out as a, as just a vegetated slope.
Right. We're more limited on the south side due to the riverfront area, we're staying out of that. So, that's why we're proposing a retaining wall.
Do you have to take out? I mean, how much does dirt do you have to remove from this? What in the net?
I don't have an estimate at the moment for, for the earthworks that I can give you, but there, there may be an ancillary soil removal.
Chris, you got any questions?
Not at the moment.
Sean?
Nope.
So, what, what percentage increase of the current parking does this represent?
I was on, I do not have a full accounting of the existing parking on the site. I would ballpark it to be 200 to 250 spaces, something like that.
The total?
The total.
Total current?
In that, I think it's in that range.
And how many spaces are you adding?
66.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a pretty big expansion.
I can also follow up and get you guys a more accurate number of what's existing.
What did it say the, the, the reason for the expansion was? I mean, you mentioned that there'll be some conferences, so is this just occasional overflow parking, or is it more constant use?
I think there's, there's kind of two main factors at play, right? Like, one is the electrification of the world, you know, that a lot of the sites we work on, there's just more activity with the utility companies generally, trying to build all the infrastructure that we need. That's kind of like the, the weather in the, in the room in terms of that, of the situation, but specifically in eastern Massachusetts, the National Grid recently, year or two ago, downsized their headquarters in Sylvan Road over in Waltham to a smaller facility in Waltham, and some of their employees at times will work out of other, the office employees may gather at other times, or may come to report out of here on a, on a regular basis.
I mean, to, to Peter's point, it, it seems to me counterintuitive that you would add this big a parking area to an existing structure that you're not exchanging the size of the structure, and, and I bet it's not full most of the time today, but maybe I'm wrong.
I can't speak to the capacity in the building. They just asked us, say, we'd like some parking spaces, because we're at capacity with our parking.
At what extent would you ask? What is this for? It begs a question in my mind.
It, it, it impinges indirectly on site plan review. I mean, even though this is not technically site plan review, it has pretty significant elements of similarity to site plan review. And that's why I asked the question, because, because at some point, maybe the use is gonna be different. I mean, hours of operation, the number of people coming in and out. I mean, Gene, I thought, you know, I know site plan review was triggered by building a structure, but if the use changes, that requires more parking, that would seem to me to trigger site plan review, and.
But the use hasn't changed.
No, it's still, it's being used as a National Grid operations facility. I mean, this is how, this is on the.
Yeah, but to the extent of how intensively, how many people.
Well, are you in a position to know whether or not the use is changing? Because I thought I heard you say, a few moments ago, you, you were just asked, hey, we need more parking.
I've been told, I was told that the use of the building is not changing.
Okay.
But that they're insufficiently parked.
That's where I'm heading here. If, if we could have somebody from National Grid, this facility, come and speak to us, I mean, it could save us all a lot of time, because we're trying to, you know, conjure up, what does this mean, and someone could just tell us.
Yeah, okay.
So, this is the existing parking, Peter, to give you perspective.
I'm sorry?
So, this is the existing parking, to give you perspective, it's on the other side of the building?
Right.
Other than this small little.
Right.
Thing, so, that can easily be counted up, and you can give us the percent increase.
I mean, in the end here, it doesn't seem to me that the engineering is super simple. This is fairly complex engineering compared to a lot of things we normally see, you know, with retaining walls and big cuts and so forth. And the other thing is, it's the visual thing. I mean, it's, this is where it's maybe more related to site plan review, putting a huge parking lot, a huge detention pond in the front of a property with frankly hardly any trees at it is, is a concern.
And, and it's, it's a property when you drive by, it's just, it's kind of pleasant to drive by, because wow, that looks great. They really designed that property well, and now there's gonna be a huge parking lot there. Just kind of like to know why. And so visually, yes, but also, that's a major roadway right next to this, and to your extent, it's a fair amount of engineering to get this right, such that five or 10 years from now, it is not impacting that major roadway, you know, during some major rain event, and I'm sure that, I, I am 100% certain you have designed to all of the standards, but I sure hope those include the standard of, it seems to be getting worse.
Were you referring to the earlier, the earlier conversations with the other matters? We do consider that in our standard of practice with, it's the standard of engineering these days, right, is that you're, we don't use the, the old TP40 storms anymore, we go to the current.
I mean, we had a rain event here in North Andover, what, a year ago?
Yeah.
Six inches in one day, and, you know, we don't normally get that here. So, but, but now we know.
Personally, and I can, I am, I understand your kind of visceral reaction to like, well, why? And we can certainly ask, you know, our client to come and kind of speak to that. You know, I do feel comfortable, you know, that the engineering is solid and, and, you know, but obviously, we'll, we'll work with you. And we, we did meet with Janet briefly on the phone this morning, walked through all of her comments, they were fairly minor. She's expressed comfort that we were answer, gonna be answering in a satisfactory way. So, we'll plan to get that in this week, so that we can wrap, make sure that that piece of it gets wrapped up with her.
I, I don't want to ask too much here, so you tell me if this is reasonable or not. Just given this change, and I'm not saying I'm against it, I just want to be informed, I would be very interested to see your perspective from 114 of what this is gonna look like. I don't know if that's doable. You have given us this perspective, which is very helpful, but I really can't translate this to what it's gonna look like from the roadway, and I don't know if that's too hard.
No, no, I think that's the, I mean, we think about it, everything we've ever had built on 114, we've spent a lot of time looking at the, the visuals of it, you know.
So, that would be helpful.
We'll bring that back to our client and discuss it with them.
So, there's no lighting for the parking lot?
We did not have a lighting plan.
And you do not plan to have light posts if there's no lighting?
You know, I suspect there may be lighting, but it really wasn't under the purview of the permits we were applying for, so we're focusing on that content.
What's your thought, Gene?
It's a requirement in site plan review, they're operating under a stormwater management bylaw. We've of course be interested to make sure that there's no glare offsite, and there is, it's called a local union building, just to the north of this.
Yep.
Do you know what operates in that?
It's a local, I read the sign today, and I'm not gonna do it justice. It's one of the local IEW, it's an office type, type use.
So, it's an office, it's not leased for residents?
Nope.
And so, the next closest is Empire Drive?
Yep.
Which is pretty well screened from this building here.
Yeah, they would be entirely behind the hill. The residences would be entirely behind the hill from our, from this project.
No, that's a relevant point. I mean, normally, a parking lot that big has some lights. Okay, so, what's the next step?
So, August 13th, I would think they'd be able to wrap up the stormwater review by then, but obviously, you have more questions that can be answered at that meeting?
Absolutely.
If we could get somebody in, that would be a big help, so, thank you.
Great.
And they're before conservation as well. Their hearing was supposed to open tomorrow night, but based on the stormwater review not advancing, they're gonna continue it to the next meeting?
We actually opened two weeks ago.
Oh, okay, and continued to this one, and it's gonna get continued again?
Yep, exactly. You guys are in control, they will follow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mass DOT, Route 114 Improvement Plan. The last update was April 2nd, there was a lot of milestones that were gonna be between then and beginning of July, so you asked that I reach out to them again for an update, and I did so. Mass DOT has received the 100% design submission from GPI, the engineering firm. On June 28th, they now begin their 45-day review period, and will be finishing any remaining environmental permitting. The scheduled add date is now April 19th, it was gonna be January at their update in April, so now it's, it's slid to April 19th, and the preliminary right-of-way has been accepted, and the right-of-way is actively working with the property owners.
Working with?
The property owners, the right-of-way division.
Is there any update on the Andover Street, Elm Street Turn, Mermack, and is that on track as far as we know, that lane?
At the last update, they, they said that it's now included in their plans.
Okay, thanks.
I didn't get updates on individual segments.
Right.
They've, they've started the construction finally.
Construction of?
Mermack.
Oh, I did the pre-construction meeting yesterday?
Well, I mean, I shouldn't say started, because, but they roped everything off.
They did the erosion control, which has to be in place for that pre-construction meeting.
Yeah.
And so, they will be starting shortly.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anything else?
So, just, again, I put on the agenda an update for the public outreach strategy for accessory dwelling units. Hopefully, you've seen by now, Peter and Aton did film a quick 1 minute 20 second video, kind of advertising the event.
Oh, yeah.
YouTube.
Oh, yeah.
YouTube. It's gone out on town social media, it's on NA CAM, running between programming. I sent a save the date message out a week or so ahead of that, so it's on schedule for the 29th at 6 o'clock in the senior center, and that's it.
Is there any limit to the number of planning board members that can attend?
I don't think so, it just can't, it's just an open meeting at that point.
I, I will not be there for the 29th of a work event.
Sure.
That's on Monday?
No.
It's a mon, yes, it is.
Oh, yes, yes, it is on Monday, yes, thank you, yeah. You're welcome to join, John.
July 29th?
July 29th.
Yeah, I'll be back, we're away for the weekend, but.
I'll, I'll confirm it with Council Peter, but it's just like when we had open houses for the master plan.
Yep.
Selectmen and plan board, all were welcome to come and give input, so.
Good, good, thank you.
And it's meeting minutes, John, June 18th.
So, somebody wanna make a motion or approve?
So moved.
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then a motion to adjourn?
Do you chance?
So moved.
Sean said yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, uh, somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Yep, take care.
Thanks.
Yep, take care.
Thanks.